All right, let's go ahead and call to me to order. It is 7:01. Good evening, everyone. Our August City Council meeting is underway, but first we will begin with a public hearing as has been advertised. This is a, this is an officially sanctioned public hearing by the City of Buckhannon Council regarding the proposed adoption of Ordinance 464 of the City of Buckhannon and ordinance that would be reviewing and renewing the franchise agreement with Sequel III Communications II LLC, the construction and operation of our cable system. Is there anyone here physically who wishes to address the council relative to the public hearing on the franchise renewal? We do not have anybody here physically, but we have received a letter in the mail that I will defer to City Recorder Randy Sanders to read us during this time period.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Date is July 26, 2023. It's addressed to the City of Buckhannon. In regard to the proposed ordinance number 464, Sequel III Communications II LLC, DBA Optimum, we believe that would be a mistake. Why would anyone give them a 10-year renewal? I have been lied to every time I talk to them, from one person to another, to a different, a different lie. To us, it's a very untrustworthy company. You should get the opinion of the people. That's on the cable, which, that is why the hearing. A lot of people can't afford the newspaper, so they don't know about the hearing. You can't expect them to just take the cable for another 10 years without knowing they had a voice in the hearing. We can't say anything about anyone else. We are opposed to it. They lied to us so much, we canceled it. Then they sent us a bill for the month we had already canceled, plus the one we owed for. They owe us money we will never get back. Southern Link and Optimum, sincerely Betty and Zane Carpenter, 3 East Lincoln Street, Buckhannon, West Virginia, 26201, noted not sure we will be in town for the meeting.
And Clark will make a copy of this and make sure.
How to say good bye?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I believe that is the only communication that we have relative to the cable franchise renewal question. And if there aren't, if there is no one else here that wishes to address the council, and we have no other communication regarding this matter, I would consider the public hearing on the matter closed. Okay. Up next is our official City Council meeting, in which we will, once again, welcome everyone and call to order, and we will observe our traditional moment of silent reflection, followed by the pledge, please.
We especially remember Larry Landis and his family. He served the city for over 30 years and passed on this past week.
Sure. Thank you, Dave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have several folks who have indicated that they wish to address the council this evening. Because of the length in which we have a list here, I would ask everyone to please try to keep your remarks as brief as possible, so that we can get to the business of the evening. So first, we will begin with Senator Barnes, who is here from Orion Strategies. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is the sixth time I have been here, and as a former politician, you haven't heard a speech yet. So tonight's my opportunity, but it'll be brief. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you all having me. We appreciate the meetings that you've had. I've had the opportunity to work with 17 counties and municipalities since the end of March. We have, we have closed those franchise agreements on 16 of them now. We have two outstanding. One is yours. I will have to say, Mr. Mayor, that you have been the most thorough of all the municipalities and all the counties I have worked for, and I appreciate the fact that you even did due diligence to see what your options were, which very few people do. In 2015, Altice USA acquired the facilities and customers of Seabridge Telecom of West Virginia, which gave it control of Sequel Corporation and others, all of which were doing business as Southern Link Communications in West Virginia. Altice continued to provide cable television service in West Virginia as Southern Link, offering service to more than 300,000 households and small businesses over a hybrid fiber optic coaxial network with more than 8,500 miles and eight head ends across West Virginia. With the Altice acquisition of Seabridge, by which Altice took over Southern Link operations in West Virginia, the Public Service Commission received numerous complaints. Some of us here today may have participated in those complaints. Naturally, with Altice's acquisition of Southern Link, continued investments had to be made in upgrades to technology, maintenance of aging equipment, as well as workforce issues. Altice, along with the Public Service Commission, realized that improvements must be accelerated, and a journey began in early 2022. Altice rebranded and began operating as Optimum. Eighteen months ago, the commission, the Public Service Commission, issued its order requiring Optimum to undertake significant measures to improve service to its West Virginia subscribers. In that time, Altice has made significant progress toward complying with all of the commission's directives, in addition to its other initiatives to enhance the experience of Optimum West Virginia customers. While more work remains, we are encouraged by metrics showing that customers are more satisfied, have fewer complaints, and have access to products and services consistent with the company's goal to be the connectivity provider of choice in its West Virginia footprint and throughout its service territory. Specifically, in the last 18 months, Optimum's overall customer satisfaction scores, as measured by customer feedback, have improved 25 and 46% across various issues. Optimum continues to invest in West Virginia, including opening new facilities, adding in-state personnel to serve customer needs, and improving the performance of its field and customer service personnel. Among other things, the company has accomplished the following. As of today, Optimum has opened four new retail locations, Parkersburg, Vienna, Lewisburg, Princeton, allowing customers to pay bills, swap equipment, and raise service issues, and is on track to open two more in Charleston and Elkins by the end of 2023, bringing its total store count to 13. As a result of the Scott Depot call center that opened last year, and the additional West Virginia-based agents, more West Virginia-based customer service agents are available to respond to customer service inquiries. Recognizing that Optimum's customers' time is valuable, Optimum has taken steps to improve timeliness and effectiveness of its in-person service visits. Despite the tight labor market, we have added field service technicians by enhancing the competitive competitiveness of our employment offerings. We continue to recruit for these roles. We've also refocused on training for field service personnel, ensuring all contractors meet state certification requirements. Fewer customers now require home visits. Optimum issued $2.24 million in credits to customer bills between July and August last year. In addition to ensuring that all late fees were capped at $2, Optimum eliminated all separate surcharges, except where required by law, and Optimum now automatically issues bill credits to customers who are impacted by full or partial outages lasting more than 24 hours. Optimum has improved its customers' ability to track outages by deploying an outage map and allowing customers to subscribe for email and text updates regarding outages and estimated repair time. Other customer communication enhancements include text alerts regarding technician arrival times for service visits or installations, a self-installation option that eliminates the need for a home visit, and an email confirming a customer's order to avoid miscommunication. Optimum continues to be committed to local communities it serves, and through donors choose, supported more than 125 projects across 114 West Virginia schools, sponsored STEM technology labs through West Virginia, and supported robotics teams in Winfield and Parkersburg High Schools. Reflective of these improvements, franchise renewals with counties and municipalities in West Virginia have moved at a record pace for the past few months. Optimum has not just simply rebranded. Optimum has been reborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. While this is fresh on our minds, and while Clark is here, I'll ask the council, would you like to just go ahead and discuss the third and final reading of the Ordinance 464 while, so that in case there are questions, Mr. Barnes is still here to answer them?
I would show move.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. McCauley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor of bringing G1 to the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously. G1 is on the table. This is Ordinance 464, Franchise Renewal. It is the third and final reading. It's back here. I can read it by caption, but that's essentially it. It is an ordinance of the City of Buckhannon, West Virginia, renewing the franchise granted to Sequel III Communications II LLC for the construction and operation of a cable system. Let's, I'd ask for a motion to bring this on, and then if there's discussion, we may have it. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 464 on its third and final reading?
Same move.
A motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Rigger. Is there further discussion?
I've talked to them blue in the face. I'm not going to say much. You know, folks catch you on the corner, and they call you and say, down with Southern Link, blah, blah, blah. Okay, there's a public hearing, and, you know, you get one letter.
Yeah.
So it's, if that's the will of the people, if one out of 2,000 subscribers in the Buckhannon system want to be heard and speak out against Southern Link, that maybe things have gotten a lot better in the last year now.
I would ask that if you, since you do have a copy of that, if you haven't already done so, to pass that along to Optimum, so that perhaps that those concerns could be maybe understood better, and maybe a solution could be reached.
Absolutely. Try to find the time break.
Yeah, that would be great. And, you know, we, we have done our best over the course of the years to, as we've received complaints, to try to contact the company on behalf of the citizens, to ask for there to be some, you know, improvements made with communication. And, and I think that in most cases, that has worked out pretty well. So we appreciate your, your help there. Are there any further comments or any questions for Senator Barnes?
I have a question. The one you're opening up in Elkins, has it opened up yet?
No.
Okay. But when it does, can people call that number directly, or is it still going to be gone to?
It's still going to go to a call center.
Okay.
Right. No, no matter where you call, and I've had this experience. My father-in-law's house burned at Hodgesville this week, and so we've been dealing with the power company, the gas company, Optimum, all of them. So from personal experience, I can tell you, it rings in at the call center in Tayside Valley first. But if you want to exchange equipment, or you want to make, have an order placed, you can still walk into any office, and they can handle it there.
All right. If there are no additional comments or questions, I will go ahead and call for the question approving of an ordinance 464 on its third and final reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed.
Aye.
Let the minutes reflect that the ayes have it of
McCauley, Robbins.
Five to two. Yes.
It was Councilman McCauley, Keston, and Robbins.
Correct. Yes. All right. Do, do we want to talk about, while, again, while Mr. Barnes is here, in case there's any issues or questions, the G2, the lease agreement between the City of Buckhannon? or questions, the G2, the lease agreement between the City of Buckhannon and the Optimum Company on the equipment on the North Buckhannon Water Tank Hill?
I'd move we bring G2 to the table.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That issue is now before us, G2. This is the lease agreement of the equipment on our Water Tank Hill. I believe, Ambie, you quoted about $15,000 over the course of a year? Okay. Is there any question or comment relative to, or issue with renewing that agreement?
I have one technical question.
Okay.
And we can talk about, because I don't think Tom should be giving us advice on the lease either. It's my recollection, and Ambie or Jerry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think Water Tank Hill is titled in the name of the City of Buckhannon, not the City Water Board. However, we all know that the water tank is the primary thing on Water Tank Hill, overlooking our cemetery. Should the Water Board have been allowed to weigh in on taking this $15,000 a year lease money? That's my question. If I'm sitting there on the Water Board, which I serve on, I would vote for it, but I'm only one of five people that serve on the Water Board. So I guess my question is, relative to the lease, would it hurt us to wait and put it on the Water Board agenda for next Thursday so that you could approve this at the ensuing council meeting? I'm just trying to protect all avenues here as to who the real stakeholder is relative to the revenue.
I'll currently threaten.
If you'll give me just a few minutes, let me check that. We may already be sending that to the Water Board because it needs all their equipment.
Okay.
Let me check.
Are you advocating that the $15,000 or a portion of should go to?
All of it already goes to the Water Board, but Ambie's simple negotiation of it, without it having been approved by the entity that operates that hilltop with the water tank, has not yet weighed in.
You're just asking for t's crossed and i's dotted?
That's what...
Okay. I wanted to make sure we weren't trying to reallocate monies away from the Water Board or here, or...
No, no.
Okay, all right.
And I'm telling you right now, as a member, as one of the five members of the Water Board, I'll vote to support this if it's taken up by the Water Board.
But you're saying you want this lease rewritten?
No.
Between the Water Board...
No, I don't think that's necessary.
I think you're saying you just want it to be...
The Water Board to weigh in on accepting the terms of the lease.
You want them to vote if they're willing to accept the money?
Yes, yes. I think that's the way we did it when I did the original lease 25 years ago.
Well, if I'm understanding correctly, the only options here, if we approve this tonight, they have an option to accept the money or reject the money. They wouldn't have an option to negotiate any part of the lease because it's with the city.
The money is going to be going to the Water Board either way.
Correct. But I'm just saying that if we can approve this tonight, then we can put it on the Water Board's agenda if they accept, vote to accept the $15,000 or reject the $15,000.
In which case, if they would, for whatever reason, reject it, what are we left with?
I don't think anybody's going to reject money. So, in the interest of time, I would like us to try to approve this tonight, and then if we approve it on the Water Board next week, it's a done deal. Instead of going to the Water Board first and then having to come back to council in two weeks.
Okay. So we could do a tentative approval then by the...
Tentative approval here, contingent on the Water Boards.
Water Board confirm?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have more than one voting member on the Water here tonight.
That's right.
I'm on the Water Board.
But there's no Water Board board.
What did you find, Ambie?
I can check that tomorrow by the computer.
So let me ask this. Per the discussion just now, I'd like to ask for a contingent approval of the lease renewal on Water Tank Hill, subject to the approval of the Water Board next week.
Sure.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. So then, if the Water Board agrees with this, which I anticipate they will, and I think we all do, then it will be under correspondence and information on the latter meeting in August, just so that we bring it back up to speed here that the Water Board approved its side of things. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah.
Good evening.
And certainly, Clark, our thoughts and prayers with Debbie's father and the house fire issue.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Up next is Dr. Joseph Reed, whom I already saw today.
Green bean.
Dr. Reed was up taking action shots at the St. Joseph's Hospital Annual Foundation Golf Tournament at Snowshoe. He could not keep the rain away, but he's here to talk to us about some green beans.
Makes the green beans grow better. Several years ago, I was looking for a way to recognize the volunteer groups in the town, and had the opportunity to go to a meeting in Charleston, which was served by Man Amale. And two or three months later, I got their newsletter indicating that they had a green bean day every year, and they collected 800 pounds of beans, but they feed 400 people daily, 365 days a year. So that doesn't go over at park. So I thought, well, this is a perfect way to do this. So we established the Green Bean Weekend with the idea of recognizing good nutrition, exercise, planning, agriculture, volunteer groups, and having fun. And we now have two activities. One is the Green Bean Cook-Off, which I have flyers here. I will pass around a copy for each of you and for the audience, and that is on August the 11th. Cost is bring a crock full of beans prepared to share with the audience who choose to come by. And the judge, Craig Carr, has graciously offered to fund the prizes for the best, the second-best cook-off entry. And then on Saturday, August the 12th, another green bean stroll. And the price for entry on that is, oh, by the way, the price for entry to the cook-off is, like I say, the crock full of beans. On Saturday, the stroll, the entry fee is five bucks for a bag of beans, preferably snapped. Hopefully, we'll get a couple bushel of beans, and all the procedures from both activities go to the parish house. We operate on a zero budget beginning and zero at the end. That way, we don't have to do too much bookkeeping.
Very limited.
For the stroll, anything goes, except for motorized vehicles, except for people with their electric scooters if they're handicapped. So wheelchairs, roller skates, walk, run, bicycles, just finish the mile, no hurry. When you get done, you're done. Come and enjoy us. Hopefully, we'll have a story, if my creativity doesn't run out, called The Saga of Teeny Weeny Green Beany. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So Doc, most of you know you had little index cards with the green bean and a little pack of seeds on there, right? So my wife and my granddaughter, you know, take those seeds, and I didn't know, but they planted them in the planter right in front of the restaurant. So now, if you go by there, Doc, you'll see green beans growing out of the flowers. They picked a bean the other day, so...
I hope everybody does that.
Yeah, well...
So Main Street's growing sweet potatoes and green beans, so...
And I've always told my wife, you know, we're getting in an argument, I'm going to plant corn in her window, window room, you know?
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
While you're here, I'll go ahead and just briefly read through this proclamation.
Read that one line.
Where? Oh, okay. I will get down to that. This is a Green Bean Weekend proclamation by the City of Buckhannon, as well as our friends up at the Upstate County Commission. And this is recognizing that hunger still exists in Upstate County and Buckhannon, recognizing that green beans are a productive and nutritious, I should say, vegetable crop that is easily grown and harvested, and acknowledging that the many activities are a success in our fair city and county because of the multitude of volunteers who are catalysts and workers in these activities. Now, therefore, we, that is me, I can only speak for myself, Robert Nielsen, the third mayor of the City of Buckhannon, we'll let Christie do her part here as president of the commission, do hereby proclaim August 11th and 12th, 2023, as the Seventh Annual Green Bean and Volunteerism Weekend, and urge all citizens of our city and our county to grow green beans, or to go to the farmer's market and purchase green beans, snap them, deliver them to the parish house to help feed those who are in nutritional need this year and next. We invite the cooks to enter the Green Bean Cook-Off at Festival Fridays on the event on August 11th, 2023. So you can sign up at the Chamber of Commerce office on Main Street. We invite all of the green bean, we invite all to the Green Bean Stroll on August the 12th at 9:00 a.m. at the Elizabeth J. Poundstone Riverwalk Trail. Run, ride, or wheelchair, stroller, wheelchair, electric scooter, you name it, wheelbarrow, we will accept it all, to any, or any motorized transportation to celebrate this activity. Come hear about Teeny Weeny Green Beany, the good giant. I get that right?
Yep.
Sponsorship provided by the Upstate County Parish House, as well as Create Buckhannon. So I will sign this, Dr. Reed, and we'll get Christie to sign her half of it, and it's official.
Did you say motorized or non-motorized?
None.
Unless it's your scooter.
Electric scooters for handicaps, okay.
All right.
Do you want me to take that to her, or do you want...
Sure, however you want to do it. That's the original, so...
Whatever's best.
We want to probably make a copy, Ambie, or...
I can do that.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, then...
All right. Thank you, Dr. Reed. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Thanks for what you do, Doc.
Okay, we need to get a picture though, because you have on a green hat, and it's green beans, so just...
The green hat is from...
Strawberry, the 75th Strawberry Festival?
Okay, can we just get you and him real quick?
Why?
I'm going to go with the story.
She's not buying any ink in the bottle.
This is an air, so I could get to something green.
Get all fixed up here, Dr. Reed. I've been sitting, so...
Okay. So left.
Dr. Reed already took my picture today, so...
All right.
Did he deliver you?
Camera working.
All right.
Yes, Dave, he did deliver me. I was one of the more than 2,700 babies he delivered.
Which one? What number?
Well, what number was it, Doc?
Maybe it's stamped somewhere.
That's right.
Nine months after consent.
Well, I don't know about that. As mom tells it, you took your sweet time, and so did I. So I was a little late coming into the world, so, and I've approached life the same way ever since. Rodney, you want to, you indicated that you'd like to address...
I need to honor her.
I know. We'll get to it.
All right.
What are we doing?
We got Channel 3 moved. So I just want to publicly thank Ambie Jenkins, Tom O'Neill, and the City of Buckhannon for helping me get it moved and get the fiber link done. That's pretty much it. And if you have, like, public service announcements or whatever, I'm planning on making cards here real soon, but you can go on the channel, and I'm going to have information on there.
And that is in the rear of the American Legion building?
Yes, 16 South and Austin.
Okay, very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what you do for the community, for the city, Rodney.
Dennis, we'll finish out the list here before we get to Mrs. Ramsey.
This is what I talked to you about Wamsby for just a moment. From my position behind the cameras, like, three-quarters of the events, I could see that there was a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that were, could have been frustrating, but it all fell together real nicely. And I want to compliment Randy, the city, the VIPs, the police department, the fire department, garbage collectors, as well as the county and state police and EMS, and whoever else was involved. Was the CBB involved in that?
Yes.
Then let me include the CBB.
It was an all-hands-on that.
Let me include that, too. It was, in one word to describe what I saw, outstanding. And I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go.
All right. Our final guest and presentation this evening, before we get into the business, is Lacy Ramsey.
I can do it.
Executive Director of the Upstate County CBB.
Campbell just told me I had two minutes and 12 seconds, so we're going to cut through this.
Works for us.
We're good. And for those of you who do not know me, my name is Lacy Ramsey. I am the new director for the Upstate County CBB. I started officially in April. You all should have packets I dropped off earlier, a brief overview of the last 12 months, of which I've had three months in. On the first page, you'll notice there's just some quick stats as far as social media stats, website visits, engagements, things of that nature. The second one includes some of the ads that were placed either on social media or through print ads, magazines, different editorial campaigns. And then the third page of that talks about some of the partnerships and networking opportunities the CBB has had with Strawberry Festival, Wesleyan, Create, the trail system, and so on. And then behind all of those, you'll see the financial statements. There's a balance statement, a profit-loss score for the last fiscal year. You're free to review those, and if you have any questions on those, reach out to me anytime. I'm happy to talk through any questions you may have. As far as what I have been doing since stepping into the role in April, I have been working on trying to create some databases to help streamline information for myself, for those who come in and ask questions such as lodging, dining, shopping, houses of worship, and things of that nature. So I've been working on that to create those. So if anyone needs those, I'll have those resources available to anyone. I've been, the board that I serve with, one of the first things brought to my attention was a need to help bridge the gap. There was some breakdown in communications with some of the property managers and hotel owners, so it was important that we stepped into that as quickly as possible. We created a new hotel committee just to help us bridge the gap and build better lines of communication between the CBB and the hotels, to work through, hear their pain points, collaborate on ideas of how can we get more heads and beds, and to understand who their customer base is so that we know how to reach them more efficiently. I've also met with the manager at the regional airport, Jenny Powers. We've had a pretty good discussion, just wanting to brainstorm some ideas to use the airport to help bring travel through there and capitalize on getting heads and beds there, making overnight stays, maybe some creative package deals we can offer them to try to get people into our area. Those conversations are still going. We had a bit of a break with the busyness of Wamsby, but we're excited to get back to those efforts to just brainstorm and collaborate and see how we can partner together to make it successful for both sides. And with Wamsby, I know the event fell within my current fiscal year, but the process started before then. I know Laura had a hand in it. My stake was just helping with some of the coordination of getting fans to and from. So we did start on that in mid-June, up until they departed. A few hiccups, but most importantly, we were able to get everybody here and everybody home safely and successfully. And since April, there have been several events that have taken place in town, barbecue bash, strawberry festival, Wamsby. We've been able to, between Tammy and myself, keep extended hours at the office. We know that people want to see... We know that people want to see more availability there, so we have been covering while we've been still searching for a part-time health. And Laura even stepped in during Strawberry to keep it open during the Grand Future Parade since I had obligations I was already committed to for the strawberry board that day. So we have logged hours. We are open for barbecue bash, and we were open every night for Wamsby and on Saturday for Wamsby for the entire day. Aside from that, I've just been working to be more familiar with our social media accounts, with media partners, other CBBS, and then the local community leaders and members here so that I can better serve you and know what you guys need, what we can bring to Buchanan. So that's the bulk of what I have. It may have been a little over two minutes, but kept it close. But I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity. It's been my pleasure to serve these last few months, and I do look forward to serving for as long as you guys will have me. If you have any questions?
We don't have any questions, but I want to commend you on your report. Very well done. It's professional, it's easily read.
Thank you.
And understood, and this is a great start. No questions.
I appreciate it. I will give credit where credit's due. A lot of that is stuff that Laura had left me templates for. So I did use a lot of what she had to help as a guide for this. So she did leave a lot of good information for me to be able to reference and do things as efficiently as I can.
And I'll note too that Laura was kind to help with you with your transition into the position and was available and probably is still available for questions to bounce off. But I just, as a member of the Wamsby Planning Committee, I want to commend Lacy. She stepped in at a rough time. We had lost our transportation program that had previously been provided by the Upstate County Department of Education, and we had to go a commercial route, and you put in endless hours, far beyond the time that the CBB was open. I know your cell phone was active well into the night, early in the morning and so forth, because, and I'll address it a little bit more in my wrap-up in my remarks at the end of the meeting, but you know, it was a challenge and I couldn't have done it, and none of the committee members could have done it without your assistance. So you stepped in and did what a true CBB director needs to do in a time of necessities. And I appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. I'm here to help and, you know, we work better as a team. So as I'm here for your disposal, if you need stuff, please feel free to contact me anytime. I'm always happy to, to help any way I can.
Well, I think it's tremendously important too. Lacy is a vice president with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, and that is, of course, our large annual event that is critically important to our community. And I think it's great that we have our CBB director so heavily involved in, in that organization. Of course, I am as well, but it is, it's great that we have so many open lines of communication with, from our CBB to the city, to the chamber, to how, how we can help make our events better for everybody, so.
Having that communication line makes the world of difference, so. Happy to do it.
I'm glad that here that you were open on Saturdays, those few Saturdays, and I would love to see that in the future, that even if a part-town person, we need somebody there on Saturdays. I think it's very important.
We've still been working to try to find someone, but until then, we know, especially if there's events, then we do try to make a point to shuffle between the two of us so that neither one's kind of obligated to six, seven days a week all the time. But when we know there's definitely going to be a need, we understand that and we're there to do as much as we can when we can.
And I've heard nothing to do with you that, on that position.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
We appreciate your efforts.
Yes. Happy to do it. Thank you, guys.
Keep it up.
With the event center, people call, you put them in contact with the.
I have, I have had a few people call, and I've been directing them over to City Hall. I didn't know exactly if there is, besides Randy, a direct contact point, but I have been pointing people this way. I haven't had a ton, but I have had a few that have come through. So I just kind of send them this way, but if there's questions I can answer for them, I'm happy to do that. But if they want to inquire about bookings and things of that nature, I send them.
Like everybody else, I've only heard good things.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Doc.
One of the things, suggestion, I know Laura tried and apparently it didn't work well, is to meet with, I think it was the restaurants, and to talk to their employees about what, what goes on in our town so that they could answer questions of public that came in. And as I've traveled around the different parts of the country, I see this as a chronic problem many places, that the, the service station and the, and the convenience stores and places like that, they don't know anything. They may not even be from the town, but if somehow an orientation of employees could be worked out, I think it would be a plus.
How about a cheat sheet? You know?
Anything.
Little list of, you drop it off to the employees. You put it on the bulletin board in the restaurant or wherever, the convenience store.
That initiative really needs to be taken up by the employers, by the owners, but can be guided by our CBB director. But I think it's incumbent upon the owners to buy in. To see if their employees, you know.
So how do you get the employers to buy in, maybe the question?
And I think to that point, having what CJ just suggested, a consistent cheat sheet because that way we, we are sending out the same information. We're not just relying on, you know, CJ to tell his employees this, but, but, you know, but Mama Roma's telling their employees something different and, you know, Sam's Pizza being told something completely different than the other two. Because if you have a multi-day event, the likelihood of people eating at multiple different places is high, and you want them to receive the same information. And also, you don't want people saying, well, I got this information from here and it turned out to be incorrect, but these people over here received the correct information. So perhaps the, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Sanders, but I also agree with Mr. Rylands that if, if we were to give them something and at least get them that far, and all they have to do is distribute, that, that would be.
And that's not difficult to do. I've been trying, I've been keeping tabs of all the events that have been happening as I've been in a position so I'll have something to reference, because a lot of them will remain the same every year. There's a few ones each Tuesday at Wamsby, a few things that'll pop in there, but for the most part, most events happen at the same time, around the same dates, length in time throughout the years. So I am working to piece some of that together, and then once I have all the information, it won't take very long to put it in something that's, will catch the eye, that either can be posted in the front for people to see or in the back for employees to reference or both.
One of the things may be for the employers to say, call Lacy.
Well, I think the mayor, I think the mayor and I talked about message, you know, message continuity, and that's the thing. I think having a cheat sheet is an excellent idea. And update it, make it fresh, keep it revised, you know, and.
Clear, concise, consistent.
Right, yeah.
Which, yeah, you would have to update it, but again, most of it, the framework would fall the same, it's just dates might shift.
Right, right.
So, but yeah, that's something that's very doable.
Good concept, yeah.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you for having me.
Have a nice evening, good weekend.
Thank you, Lacy.
Okay. At this time, I will declare public comment period closed. We've heard from everybody who has signed up or have been on the agenda, so we will now go through our department and board reports as well as the remaining business of the evening, and we will begin with Mr. Jerry Arm. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'll begin with what I think everyone, all the employees will say is, shoot. We had three major events, and I just want to publicly thank every city employee in the city of Buchanan, because we had three public events. That's how I've been counting down this season, is event one over, event two over, event three. I think that, to the employees' credit, every one of them, they were asked to step up, they did their normal jobs, they stepped up and never faltered. We asked them this last event to work 12 to 18-hour days, they did that. Was they always happy? No, but they did it, they done a wonderful job, and they pulled off three successful events, I feel, and, and really compliments to all the employees for their efforts. So that's my soapbox, and I'm off of it. Let's get on with the report. Street's been working on installing the streetlights on Gateway West, and we'll be finishing up that project over the next few weeks. We will be completing the Scott Street intersection as soon as we can get materials. We've tried all week to get Waring to finish that topcoat on that intersection, have not got it, so hopefully. We're not sure about tomorrow, but we really did want to go up there and start in the midst of all the yard sales for tomorrow, so we're going to defer till the first of the week and hopefully be able to get materials to finish that up. We'll be finishing curbs and paving and installing a privacy fence on the Madison Street project, and over the next couple of months, we'll be doing our patchwork on our streets to try to seal them up before winter. So again, anybody knows of puddles, make sure to call them and get them on the list to fill. Sewer Department, sewer crews continue to work on Shawnee Drive and Myrna Street projects. Under waste collection, the board met this morning and approved the Make It Shine event to be conducted at our transfer station on Mudlock Road on Saturday, September 9th and September 23rd from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. The event will be the same as the past year's following, allowing two loads equalling a level pickup truck bed to be disposed of for free of charge to all subscribing customers of the city of Buchanan Waste Collection Service. You must provide photo identification and proof of service in order to take advantage of it. Tires and appliances containing freon will be charged at the normal transfer station rate. If you're not sure, if you qualify to participate in this event, please contact Buchanan City Hall at 472-1651 or the transfer station at 472-4443. Again, we were developing a flyer that will be out there for handout at both the City Hall and Transfer Station, but encourage people to take advantage of that in cleaning up their properties. And that's all I have unless there's questions.
Jerry, there's a power outage tonight somewhere, said Main Street. Do you know the extent or where at?
I, I don't have any more information, CJ, than what you probably got in that message.
Yeah, it says Spring Street, Denon Street, Main Street, but I don't know. The restaurant just texted me, it begins at nine o'clock. They better shut down or there'll be a huge mess in the morning, you know?
I'll see if I can, I can text to see if I can get a response to a question, CJ, but no, I don't know exact addresses.
Jerry?
Yes, ma'am.
The project that was done at 1:20 and a half East Main, Stewart.
I don't know if the word came to you or not, but the last big major water, it was worse in the basement of the house than before they put the line through.
No, I haven't heard that, Pam, but I'm like sure it was Ethan is the word.
Well, I think he was talked to, so. But that needs corrected or whatever.
We'll have a conversation.
Anything else for Jerry?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
Ambie Jenkins.
Okay, I'm going to give you your balances for the month of July. General Fund money market and checking, 744,605, and CD still at 86,550. Stored landmarks, 3,028. Stalker Youth Center capital campaign, 443,159, and then there's a $12,000 pledge. Cold tax, 32,816. Municipal stabilization, 918,737. Blood control count, 78,313. Consolidated Public Works Board, 162,000 with 235,000 CD for the cemetery. Sales taxes at 1,155,805. We received 595,000 from sales tax in July, for sales tax in July. American Rescue Plan, 1,683,554. July revenues were 860,726, and the expenses, you'll see those in your packet, is 739,644. We did move 500,000 from sales tax to general fund. Another thing I want to report, the fuel surcharge, the waste fuel surcharge on waste bills, that went down from 10.51% to 7.69%. That's a Public Service Commission recommendation, and the Waste Board accepted that reduction. For the CAC report, Colonial Arts Center report, okay, so we're not giving you a plague.
A what?
I typed, I typed this up quickly, and I did not proofread it either auto-checked or I didn't pay attention. A seating fundraiser has been launched. A plague can be placed on a seat for $50.
Can we do a plaque instead?
It's a plaque, yeah, we'll do the plaque instead, or you could get the plague if you.
A plate would be appropriate, but not going to be a plaque.
So I want to correct that. The gentleman from Record Delta actually caught that for me and I couldn't contain Dave Hartley is the new West Virginia Wesleyan Technical Director, and he's been assisting us with the balcony sound. He's given us some recommendations there. Ev Windling is committing $2,000 towards that project. Then Ann Wilson, our director, or manager, attended a grant workshop this week, and she's looking to apply for some grants for the CAC. And then Rustic Mechanicals performed the Comedy of Errors on July 7th, and it was really a big hit. I went to that, it was a lot of fun. Stalker Youth Center Camp Buccaneer held a small talent show in there in July. There was about 50 used, participated. I stopped in for a few minutes, and it was really fun to watch them. They really enjoyed getting the whole stage and, and doing their thing. And then the other thing, the property demolition for the, pertaining to our reef grant, those two problem properties, the buildings have been torn down on Nona and Ambrose Street. So we're finishing up those projects. And that's all I have.
We're trending well with the sales tax.
I was thinking the same thing, we really are.
Inflation.
You know, so I was just at municipal league, and I, I, I had, I was pretty heavy involved in helping both Somersville and Fayetteville attain their home rule status and, and talk, made several trips down to talk to councils and mayors about, you know, the benefits of it. And we, we are, we are leaps and bounds even higher than Fayetteville and Somersville with their sales comp tax collections, which just, I mean, if you think about all of the transient traffic that goes down Route 19 and stops at Somersville and stops in Fayetteville with the New River Gorge and Somersville Lake, I mean, this is a busy little city here to have that much revenue coming in from sales tax. I mean, it's really, it's remarkable. I mean, we're, we're really very, very fortunate. So, thank you.
Good night, Jamie.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Up next is our, our chief, JB Kimball.
Good evening, mayor, councilor, you all. In your packet, you'll see our year-to-date through June 30th and also the one month of June, call volume and responses. Leading into, as Jerry was talking about, the Wamsby event. We had a, we had two and a half years planned, right, Randy?
Right.
And thank the Lord we did that. Chief Gregory and myself and Randy had met when that first came about, and Steve walked off, and we sat down and started playing this. Not as a, a different avenue of the Strawberry Festival, we already had a base to go on, but not knowing what to expect, we, we planned for the worst, which that's what we should be doing. And it's like we were talking at the hot wash yesterday, when you plan for the worst and you don't have the worst, everybody on emergency services basically got to go attend the events. We did have some calls at the events, but we still, we got to partake in absorbing what went on. And I've always said, I was never a banned person, but I really enjoyed the events, enjoyed the, the bands themselves. The majority of the international bands visited the fire station, and we had a awesome time. I mean, the, the kids in those bands and the adults, they, I guess typically in, in their country, they're not allowed to come into fire stations and police stations or get in the police car or get in the fire truck. So it was a, you know, something you're only going to see once in a lifetime, and we really enjoyed it and took a lot out of it, although we did work a lot of hours. We doubled, we doubled staff for the whole week. That way, you know, we could make sure we was ready for the worst. We did, the majority of the call volume actually was from, you know. We did, the majority of the call volume actually was from, you know, the community. It was not from the Wamsby events. We did have some heat exposure calls at the college, but our call volume for the week was more in our residential areas and on our highways for our normal folk. And it was up. I don't know whether it was just more people coming here, we had more accidents, more medical calls, and we actually had five fires in four days, which is not a typical situation. So, but we had a really good time and there's a list of groups here I want to thank. Banks District Fire and EMS, Warren District Fire Department, Elmore Fire Department, Upstate County EMS, Lewis County EMS, Weston Fire Department, Bealington EMS, Randolph County EMS, Webster County EMS, WVU Hospitals, Community Care, the Civil Support Team, which is a specialized federal team that we normally have here for Strawberry Festival. We brought them back. They specialize in like hazardous materials and weapons of mass destruction. So we normally have them, request them for strawberry. We have them back because of the international aspect of the event. The Office of Emergency Management and the Health Department. You know, we had the one incident with the individual having chicken pox, which is not a huge thing, but we, as a group, utilized our, you know, to put that out to the public. We wanted to be transparent and it worked real well. Sue took wonderful care of that individual and by the end of the week, that person was well enough to actually go out and enjoy some of the stuff. And the biggest thing I took from the event was, you know, the people who come to the firehouse was how much they liked Buchanan. And I said, so what's the difference? And the majority of the events they attended in other countries, it was not safe to go out and about. And these individuals were walking from the college to Walmart every day and buying stuff because they could and they loved it. They'd stop by the firehouse, they enjoyed their trip. They, you know, the community here embraced them all, you know, whether it be at the fire station, the police station, Main Street, it didn't matter. The community embraced the bands and we had a wonderful time. So I just, Randy, great job. Thanks for all the planning today. It was rough for a while and then it's tough to gain that many resources to figure out, you know, for the worst case scenario. And I'm sure Chief Gregory will relate to that in his report next time. So, a couple of other things we're working on. The mayor sat in on a Zoom meeting along with some other individuals the other day. I'm working on a mental wellness program, not just for our fire department, but for all first responders in the region. I've also integrated the Elkins Fire Department and the Weston Fire Department into that planning. There's a real need for that nowadays, you know, and I've taken several mental wellness classes in the last year and I've learned that, you know, how people act sometimes, you know, at the fire station could relate back to some PTSD from some call volume and stuff like that. So I'm learning and I'm going to continue to learn. But this Battalion 1 Consulting Group is going to be here on September 8th and 9th. It's the only group I spoke to that they actually are going to come here and visit the fire stations to get to know us. So, you know, they're coming in on their own time, their own dollar this time, but if we decide to go with them, it's going to be a program that, we're going to have a train-to-trainer program so we can get out to the peer system. We're not a big enough fire department if we have a tragic incident within the fire department that we can handle it, you know? If I have a firefighter that's on duty tonight get injured or killed, our department's not going to be able to handle that. Somebody from outside is going to have to come to help us. And that, those people that come to help us, we're going to have to have, know them and trust them to be able to talk to them. And that's the biggest thing is figuring out the route that we need to take to get to the point where we can help the immediate need, but as community leaders, I think the city and county, we really need to start looking at employee assistant programs because it, you know, there's a lot of people out there having problems. And until you work with them every day and you see some differences in them, you don't realize them, you know, there's problems out there and people need help. So, working on that. We continue to work on the training facility. If you get a chance, go out there. The house is almost completely done. It's shelved up, it's waiting to get the bathtub put in it. It's got a couple of doors to put up yet, but we're just about ready to start our first training event out there. I spoke with Jerry Arnold earlier, still waiting to get the DOD work done. Captain Bax and I would like to get that leveled off so we can go out, stake off what we, what room we need so we can get started on that aspect of it. We do have, the Board of Education just donated us an additional three buses. So we have, we're going to end up with like seven buses. We have a tractor, off a tractor trailer from the city and three other cars out there. So we are going to have a regional extrication course out there here in the near future. And been working on our apparatus maintenance. Engine one, we sent it to a local mechanic who we've really entrusted in taking care of our trucks. He's very picky. He went through it with the fine to come and, you know, if you're going to maintain half million dollar fire trucks, it costs a little money to make them last longer. So that's where we're at. So, other than that, unless you all have some questions.
Well Chief, I want to thank you, and again, I'll address it later. Our remarks aren't going to be that long tonight. We'll do a better wrap-up later on, but want to thank you and the team you put together from other communities for not only the fire and rescue side, but I know you kind of oversaw the medical response side. That was, that was into your field of expertise. So, very well done, very well done. I couldn't be more proud of our group. Steve Wyckoff joining us from the county side. I think it was excellent. Thank you.
Sure, good appreciate it. And that, it's like Ambie and I were speaking the other day, we have a baseline of what we can handle now and if other organizations see the need, they want to bring something to Buchanan, here's what we can do. So, look forward to working with y'all and have a good evening.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we've got a few things we've been working on just to make you aware of. The McCoy versus City of Buchanan case that we've discussed in the past, zoning appeal. There was a hearing before Judge Rieger on Monday. Prior to that hearing, I met with Ms. McCoy beforehand and discussed a potential resolution to that matter. Going to work with Vincent Smith. There's been some changes to her property, specifically there were some cables that had been placed on a part of her property by Mon Power that have been removed and that is going to change kind of some things. I think we're going to be able to reach a resolution without that matter going, proceeding any further litigation. So Judge agreed to continue that case until such time as we've worked with Ms. McCoy to see if we can, you know, put this, put this issue to bed. So Vincent will be visiting that property to talk about kind of moving the offending structure in question and I think we're on a, we're on a good glide path to resolve this issue with Ms. McCoy on College Avenue. On a couple of issues related to Water Board, number one, with respect to Valley Green, just my wave update because I hadn't heard anything from them, I reached out to Valley Green's attorneys for an update. They reported that they hadn't heard from their client actually about the matters that had been discussed, which are the, from the city's perspective, the placement of a master meter near where our valve is, as well as, and a general concerns about the quality of their lines and their development and the city, you know, is obviously maintaining its position that it does not own or have any responsibility for the lines in that development, but that we do, of course, just as a, as a city government, have an interest in making sure that those lines are robust enough in the event of a fire event to, you know, handle any firefighting needs that are there. And we're seeking their consent to place that master meter in our preferred location. With respect to another matter on the Water Board, the Water Board is going to discontinue for a couple of reasons. Discontinue its courtesy practice of flushing, inspecting and assisting with minor repairs of privately owned fire hydrants. I've prepared a letter for the Water Board's approval notifying and notifying owners of private hydrants of this change. State regulations still require the Water Board as a public water utility to quote-unquote "assure" that private hydrants remain in operational condition for firefighting purposes, which under those are 250 gallons a minute of the state insurance regulations, which have been adopted by the Public Service Commission. The Water Board, in my opinion, the Water Board can fulfill its regulatory duty to assure those private hydrants operational readiness by requiring the owners of those private hydrants to have them inspected and serviced at regular intervals and file and have the service, the licensed service providers file with the Water Board the results of those inspections. At the Water Board's meeting next week, it'll be, that letter will be on the Board's agenda to consider and, and I think that takes care of that. On the West Virginia Wesleyan Property Exchange Matter, I've been in discussions with the college's council, an attorney from Bridgeport that I've known for a very long time, Daven Seaman, we actually used to work together at Steptoe and Johnson. We're currently, we've, he and I agree that a survey of not all of the properties, but several of the properties, especially the walk trail, is really necessary in order to kind of make sure that this exchange is done right. I'd asked Dale Bennett to kind of take a preliminary look at that in, with the idea of giving us an estimate on what, on what it would cost to do a full survey of the walk trail, dog park and the restrooms that are by the parking lot. Daven, Mr. Seaman, I may have the college, indicated the college would be willing to share in the cost of that survey with the city, so this would just be the city, a city expense. But Dale got back to me this morning actually and said that an initial review means that this might be a little bit more complicated and if we want to discuss this in a little more depth in executive session, we can. But I don't think there's anything, there's nothing that's going to prevent this from happening, it's just a little bit more involved on the walk trail front because of some other property issues that are associated with that related to the railroad and another private property owner kind of in the vicinity. There's an item on your agenda tonight related to a deed of dedication from the city from a Mrs. Bagley. It's for a property on Cleveland Avenue. We don't have the signed deed back for Mrs. Bagley yet, so I would ask that at least the resolution be deferred until next meeting, although I think it'd be appropriate if council wanted to just express through a vote on the record its, its willingness in principle to accept the property. And then once we have the signed deed back for Mrs. Bagley, who lives in Massachusetts, we just don't have that back yet from her, then I can complete the draft of the resolution and can take it up at the, at the following meeting, but.
Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
This is about a half an acre off of South Riverbank, right?
That's right, yes, that's right. And we own the property next to it already.
We've long coveted being able to control Riverbanks, so that's a great outcome, I think.
Could I go ahead and just while Mr. O'Neil is there to, under G5, to take his legal counsel to just express that we are interested in, in pursuing this and we can, we can execute the resolution at the next meeting?
Well, well, whatever. The meeting following receipt of this signed and authorized deed.
Yeah, is that, is that somewhat, something that we could have a motion for?
Motion to support, yeah.
Have a motion by Mr. McCauley, is there a second? There's a second by Mr. Thomas, is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
Thank you. And finally, finally, just for the next meeting, I've asked Rusty Webb to appear by video conference just to give the council an update on the opioid settlement, the opioid litigation settlement, the status, and I think that's, that's likely to happen. So if there, I don't think there's anything else. Is there anything?
No, they may ask you about the business license question.
Oh, right, yes, well, we can get to that if you want to later under strategic, but if nothing else, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, under correspondence and information, you have a few things here and that first item is notice of public hearing, which we had today, this evening, relative to ordinance 464 renewing the cable franchise agreement. You have the Charles Gibson Library Director's Report for July. City Council invite to the Upstate County Commission meeting. As a reminder, we discussed this in an executive session relative to property matters back at the July meeting. And I say the July meeting because there was one. So we want to remind everyone that we are invited to the Upstate County Commission meeting on August 10th. I believe Christie will let me know a specific time in which it gets, when they, when they get their agenda kind of lined out as to what time she, they would like us to, to be there for that portion of their meeting. This will be relative to the property matter and the properties that they purchased behind the courthouse. So please keep your, your eyes and ears peeled to August 10th. Foster's Marketing Group, this was, you've got a letter from, that was sent to the ABCA regarding the special event license for Wamsby. You have a FOIA request from Robert Brunswick, police records dated back to 2015, and then a FOIA request from the Meadows Law Office for building permits, inspections, contractor information at 49 South Florida Street. Under the consent agenda, we've got some minute catch-up. Alice was so gracious to help in the, in the wake of Wamsby and the preparations for so, so I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which includes three sets of minutes from, from, from May, June and July, as well as approval of the building and wiring permits and approval of the payment of our bills.
Shaloot.
We have a motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Rieger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Down to strategic issues for discussion or vote. There are six items. We have taken care of three. So G1 and 2 are taken care of. G3, we have a contract with, to approve with John Slaughter as our city cat trapper. Ambie, is there anything you want to add to this? It's pretty, pretty, pretty plain and simple.
Yeah, we didn't, we usually offer this to a city employee and we could not get any city employee that would accept doing this. Jerry contacted Mr. Slaughter and he was agreeable to it. We actually had calls, so we already got him started on it. So this is kind of a formal acceptance to continue to use him. He picks up the cats only as directed. We get a call, we send him to where the complaint is being made. He has to get permission to set the trap. And then if he catches a cat, then he takes it to the humane, up to the animal shelter and then they evaluate the animal from there. And then he would be paid $20 per cat.
Can you make your motion?
Mr. Rieger has motioned that we engage with this contract and CJ Ryland has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, we will follow our, Ambie's guidance and we will approve this if you so choose so. I'd call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, G4, we had a discussion about this last time in July as a portion of our, at the end of our executive session. We have some changes that have taken place with the ABCA section of law in West Virginia and it is looking like the, the state of West Virginia, per the House of Delegates and state senators, are, are sending out a communication that we as municipalities should no longer be collecting municipal license fees for alcohol sales. We, in the city of Buchanan, we did send out our renewal applications back in the April-May timeframe to take effect for July the 1st, but that was back before it was fully official that the legislation had been put into place. We have since learned otherwise. And so, per our discussion in executive session last time, I'd like to open the, the thought or the potential here that we would go ahead and say that we as ahead and say that we as a city of Buchanan are not going to collect business alcohol fees in our city, and this would result in roughly a change in revenue to us in the tune of about $10,000 annually. So it's not a large chunk of money, and it's something that we can help our friends that own restaurants that serve, and establishments that serve alcohol out with, as well as comply with what state code is, is saying. There was, as, as Mr. O'Neil pointed out, and if he'd like to elaborate on this, feel free to, there was, where there was some ambiguity, it, where it was, is the, the word or the language pertaining to additional fees, some, some believe that it's, it's we can't charge anything more than what we've already been charging. I'm not sure that was the point of the legislation, I think the point was, is that, that the state of West Virginia would charge the fee, the cities could not charge an additional fee, meaning the cities can't charge a fee, period. Is that?
Yeah, that, you said it, that's right.
So I would like for us to go ahead and officially take action, per Mr. McCauley's guidance, the end of our executive session, as well as Mr. O'Neil's, that we just say as a city, we will not be collecting this, and any that, that have been collected for this fiscal year beginning July the 1st, we can retroactively refund those monies back to the establishments. Is there a motion to that effect?
No moves.
There is a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Thomas, is there any discussion?
I would only add that this is a classic example as to how fragile our opportunity to collect revenues are with the state of West Virginia, and we need to be ever vigilant, not only as an entity ourselves, but through our municipal leg, to be very cautious about other things that could be coming down the pipe.
Sure.
Because here we are, celebrating another nice windfall quarter of our sales tax, and allows us to do all kinds of things in the, in a simple vote, or two votes to the two houses.
They can take that away.
Yeah, exactly. So just, let's just be, just be ever vigilant.
Right, absolutely.
And there's a lot more than just money involved with the legislature, too. That has an impact on us, as a community. I'll talk about that in the executive session.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table, is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for the question, this would be officially removing alcohol fees collected by the city of Buchanan, and any, any fees collected or that we've received from those requests, we will be sending back to the establishments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, abstain.
Let the record show that Mr. Rylands, due to his ownership of a, a establishment that would be, you know, receiving this back, he will abstain all the rest of the council votes in favor. Okay, finally, here tonight, the Parks and Recreation Board met last week on Wednesday, and then met with our public, or our Consolidated Public Works Board on Thursday, made a pitch to, to have an allocation of $100,000 toward improvements at our city park. The, the Consolidated Public Works Board received a detailed report from, from the, from the Parks and Recreation Board relative to some of the improvements that want, that they, that the board would like to make. That includes installing, or, or working on improving playground equipment, and this is specific at the city park. That includes expanding and resurfacing the, and buying new, new nets and new backboards for the basketball court, making it a full regulation-sized basketball court, which it is not right now. That includes paving the, the roads in the city park, that includes adding additional lighting, it also includes a, adding a trail system that would, that would connect the street level, Park Street, up into the wooded area, and creating somewhat of a, of a, of a nice walking or, and/or mountain biking trail through there, and then the big, the big ticket in the city park would, would be to add two pickleball courts in the lower end where there is currently nothing. We've, we've deliberated that that is, that is a really good place to include pickleball. So the Parks and Recreation Board has been very active and working very hard, we've worked with Andrew Loudon, and Jerry, and Brad with the street department. Andrew has been invaluable with this, he's come to our, our meetings, and so the Parks and Recreation Board is very excited. Consolidated Public Works Board unanimously supported the allocation of $100,000 for, and, and just note, too, it's not a blank check for $100,000. The Parks and Recreation Board will be working with Consolidated Public Works Board to, as, as expenditures come up, but we would like to have, know, know that we have a budget of $100,000, and based on Andrew's figures, that's what it would be to really improve our city park. So the board voted unanimously, and then we, we were sending it to city council for city council's hopeful support, so that we can take a huge leap toward drastically improving a, and, and much-needed improvements of our city park on Park Street. So that is the request.
Has there been any more contact with Rotary?
Oh, I do need, thank you, I do need it. So Rotary has, has offered to, to help with the, the pavilion up there, as well as Carl Boone. Carl is, of course, a chi, you know, a retired chiropractor here in town, he has 30 men that would like to donate the labor of helping to completely re, completely overhaul and rehab that Rotary Pavilion, as well as work on all the pavilions in the city park that are in, the, the two, the two wooden, woodens need the most work. The one up on the hill is in really good shape. So yes, thank you, that's all, that's also part of it.
How many other communities have pickleball courts?
A lot.
A lot.
They were playing, I got a video of them playing pickleball at the college's old tennis courts.
Correct, yeah.
Now, as far as us allocating the $100,000, I'm fine, but I'd like to have a copy of the specifics, the reports, whatever that they gave to Consolidated.
Okay.
And that we, instead of, you know, that we give it to them as things are completed, or, so we know what's going on.
But we're, what we're asking for is, is that this be set as like, as the budget that we, we want to, it's, like I said, it's not a blank check, we're not writing a check to the Parks and Recreation Board for $100,000 to do what we want.
They'll come back, they want disbursements?
Correct, correct.
Prior, prior, too.
Prior, when they want a payment, they supply, tell us what you're doing.
Right.
But they also get us.
Be careful there.
The plans.
Yeah, when they have a plan that comes with a cost, I think that's when it should be, right after the plan is complete.
The, the goal here is to, is to, instead of having each individual expenditure have to go to Consolidated and go, and go to city council, and then we, we want to streamline the approach so that we know that we have $100,000, that's, that's the cap to fix the city park. The plan that Andrew detailed is, that's, 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 it's the blueprint, so that we know that we can work on it, and then as, 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 when we need, when we need funding cut for this equipment, that equipment, or, or that, or these tools, or these materials we purchased, we know that we have the authority and the ability to, to, to come to the city and say, okay, we're, we're ready for this, we're ready for that, and we don't have to keep coming back every single time with every little expenditure that would come down the pipe. We're asking for a budget of $100,000.
And some could be in-house labor, and some could be subcontract.
Well, and we have donated labor from the, from the group of Christian men from different churches that are, that, they're not going to be billing us for any of their labor, but they would like us to, to provide the material.
What fiscal years is this falling?
The current one.
Several?
The current one.
You think all will be done this fiscal?
This isn't it, I mean, this is just the city park, it's just a start.
And they have been very active in, in analyzing all of the needs throughout all of the different parks, but this is the city park.
We're starting with the city park because it's, it, it is the one that needs the most TLC.
You may want to remind council, Mr. Mayor, who this board operates with and under, you know, who they would report to, or they're not just independent agents.
No, this board reports to Consolidated Public Works Board, which is over our streets and parks, and so that was how, that's how, that's how this council devised the ordinance when it was created.
Consolidated Public Works had a pretty robust discussion about this.
Does this require a budget revision, and Ambi, do we have $100,000 on hand that we can establish this?
Shell's tax.
Yeah, but these are tangible improvements in the community that will be, that will pay dividends long-term.
No, we can do it one of two ways. The $100,000 contribution can go directly to Consolidated from general fund, or you can ask that the bills be paid separately through the general fund, and then we pay them as they come in.
I think, I think we heard a call from our community that our parks needed TLC, a lot of TLC. You know, we structured it, we, we, we vetted it, we put together a pretty robust council or, or committee with subcommittees, and just my small observation, I have not attended many of the meetings, it's a very active, well-attended, they're answering the call, so I would recommend council support them and keep the momentum going, and, and taking this through, you know, through fruition. So I'll make the motion to approve of the request from Consolidated Public Works.
All right, we have, we have a motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mr. Rigger, is there any further discussion?
Can he and I vote on this since we're on Consolidated?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
And we will get a copy of this detailed report that they had to consult.
Yes, but I want us to be very careful, that, that, right, it's not a contingent, and we are entrusting the, we created the Parks and Recreation Board to carry out this mission. I don't really want council micromanaging, because then why did we create the board? If council wants to do this, why do, you know, we want to, I want to make sure that we're empowering.
I understand that, we have a fiduciary responsibility when it comes to money, and all I'm saying is I'd like to see a copy of the report and what they're going to do with the money.
Sure, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes are opposed, motion carries unanimously.
We, we would coordinate the volunteer labor through Jerry, so that he has a.
Yeah.
Jerry and Andrew, I don't think we, I mean, we want.
Andrew's been really taking the lead on, on the Parks and Rec side of things, he's done a great job.
We always look to Jerry, but Jerry's trying to diversify some of these projects to folks who are ready to step in and assist, am I phrasing that correctly?
Absolutely.
Okay, we are down to council comments and announcements, and we will begin with Pam.
Well, I can't say anything or add any more than, than everything turned out great with Wamsby, and I just can't imagine what's done behind the scenes, but I've heard nothing but positive comments, and people came up to me and said, and they were from out of town, said, "This parade is the best parade you all have had in years," and had nothing but positive comments, and I just want to thank everybody, and, and I was tickled to see the, the city employees carried the flag that's going to Germany, I thought that was a really sweet touch. One thing funny is, I don't want to see Randy run around town with that cowboy hat.
That's your opinion, that's one person's opinion, I think I was pretty damn good at that cowboy hat.
I like the shiny hair, though.
It messes up my hair, but that's not a big problem.
But also, I would want people to go out and support community theater this weekend, the Wizard of Oz started tonight, at, tonight, it's tonight, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Saturday, it's at 7 o'clock, Saturday, there is going to be two shows, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00, and then another matinee on Sunday, and I guess there's 30-plus children, and they're just thrilled and excited to death to be doing this, so everybody, please go and support them. I've got tickets for sale, by the way, too, so.
Thank you, Pam. David?
Kudos to Wamsby, it was a great event, I didn't get to all of the events, but several of them, and it was a terrific thing. I promised Ann Wilson and some of our colleagues on the Colonial Arts Center Board that I would put a plug in for the opportunity to secure a placard with your name, however you want it identified, on the seats up in the balcony. I think we've sold seven, and I, I got, I got seat number one, so, you know, challenge our friends and colleagues out there to buy a seat. There's a couple of things that, sometimes we, we get so involved with our own entity that we don't recognize the challenges of those entities that support our mission as much as maybe what we should appreciate. In the next nine, 10 months, our community is again going to, as far as I know, consider an excess levy for our education system, and I hope that with the recent uproar and the changes and tumult, that maybe we can bring the Board of Education and the new superintendent together for some sort of forum and conversation and start the word, I mean, we're only as good as our school system is, and boy, I sure hope that we can turn that corner and work with the Board of Ed to get that thing passed. And along that same line, Robbie, are you on the St. Joe's Board? Gosh, to read the article that I read about what's going on with Stonewall Jackson and the potential for our hospital to lose its accreditation because of Stonewall moving along the corridor. I don't know what it takes, but I, I hope that the city can be supportive of St. Joe's and its efforts.
We have been all along, I've been with Skip on the front lines of this the entire time, so, but we are, we, we feel good about our position, we feel good about our appeal. The, the, they, most recently, Stonewall Jackson did not appeal, did not file an appeal to the, the healthcare authority siding with our, with, with our position, which is very good news.
That's right.
Now, even, even if we, so, okay, where we are is, St. Joseph's Hospital has what's called a critical access designation. We cannot have a hospital within, another hospital within 15 miles of our campus, we can't. Otherwise, we lose the critical access designation. What critical access does is, it changes the way that, that we are reimbursed for Medicare and Medicaid services at the hospital. If you are a PPS hospital, which is, which is what United Hospital Center, Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital Center are, they, they receive between 3% and 7% of, of reimbursement from a service rendered that would be relative to Medicare or Medicaid. A critical access hospital receives near 100% reimbursement of that same exact service. The battery that requires us, or that, that allows us to be a critical access hospital is, is we cannot be more than, we have to be over 30 miles from our nearest Level 1 Trauma Center, which we are from United Hospital Center in Bridgeport, we are over 30 road mi, it's road miles, not air miles, road miles, we are over 30 road miles from that campus, so that's check mark one. We have to be, we, we cannot have an interstate highway system in our county. US Route 33, Quarter H is not an interstate, it is a limited, or controlled access highway, so that's another check mark. We have to be considered, from a topographical standpoint, a mountainous county, which Upstate County is a mountainous county, Lewis County and Harrison County are not. Anything west of here is not a mountainous county, so we are. The, the vast majority of the patients served must be from what's considered a rural setting. We all know that the, that, what the definition of that is, is, you know, what, that, I, we all think that Buchanan is a rural setting, but Buchanan itself is an urban setting, but Upstate County has a lot of rural tentacles, so, so the patient mix must be from a rural setting, which we check that box, too. So we are a critical access hospital, so that is a federal designation that the state has adopted. We, in order for us to keep that, we have to keep, no other hospital can locate within that 15-mile bubble. Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital, which is owned by Mon Health, has, as we've all seen the news, has signaled that they wish to, to build a new hospital, a 27-bed hospital above Sheets in Weston. That, that would be within our 15-mile bubble. If we, if that were to happen, St. Joseph's Hospital would, would, it would, it would lose its critical access designation. That represents about a $12 to $14 million revenue swing from the black to the red. That represents about a twelve to fourteen million dollar revenue swing from the black to the red. We are not, we are not owned here, we are a WVU medicine campus. There is significant concern that WVU would not continue to operate a hospital in this community if that were to happen. Now, here's what I will tell you. This has been going on for probably two years by this point. And it's been a ti, it's, it's, it's every time we, every time we face a battle and we, and we, and we win, we, we, we breathe a sigh of relief, but we know the next one is coming. So we have been successful in the court battles thus far. This is all the way through the West Virginia Intermediate Appellate Court. It's, that's the new business court that was created by the legislature. They, they side with us and the reason for that is, is there is a thing in West Virginia called the Certificate of Need. Certificate of Need says that every time a new service or a new facility were to be added by a hospital, you have to go before the certi, before the CON Board for that to be approved. A change in, what, what's prompted the most recent signal by, by Stonewall is there was a change in the CON legislation that said that, that, that the maximum cap for an improvement was five million dollars. It is now one hundred million dollars. That, but, 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 the big, the big carrot here is that is on your own campus. That is not an additional campus. So the healthcare authority, the healthcare board, the healthcare review board, heard a proposal by Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital and all that was included in this proposal was is that we want to, we, we want to construct a new hospital, but it wasn't, it wasn't specific to the, to, to where that was going to be. They approved it because it was, it fell under the hundred million dollar site improvement. We appealed that immediately and we have, and, and that, that decision has, has been put under review and the healthcare authority now says, wait a minute, we see that this was going to be an additional campus or relocation, not a, a physical plant improvement on the current facility, which is out on West Second Street or Route thirty-three West, away from Weston. So, so they appealed that. Our appeal stuck, meaning the decision that the healthcare authority, when they, when they went back and said, no, we think, we think St. Joe's is correct, that stuck. They had an opportunity to file an, an appeal with the West Virginia Intermediate Appellate Court. They did not, that timeframe has closed. We feel that we are in good position right now. What we have to do is make sure that the state of West Virginia never gets rid of certificate of need because if they do, none of this battle is even relevant. Anybody can do anything they want to, anywhere. So St. Joseph's Hospital is the largest employer in this county. It is, it is a major economic driver and we have to do what we have to do to make sure that our hospital remains a, a very viable piece of our community. The sad part is, is that St. Joseph's Hospital is performing better than it ever has been. It is, there are more services provided at St. Joe's now than there ever have been. We have, we have excellent doctors, we have excellent care. We have, we are financially in the best shape we've ever been in as a hospital and yet we're fighting for our survival. Has nothing to do with money, but it does, but I mean, it's not right, right at this, at this moment. So we, again, we, we feel good about our, about our position right now. And that's, this is additional information that is being made available to you in the front, since the My Buchanan article came out. But what we need to do is we need to make sure that we stay on our legislators and that we need to make sure the CON stays and we need to, we need to pray for our hospital.
Well, if a resolution of this body would help in any way to, you know.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know.
I've penned letters as mayor and as a board member and as a development authority director to, you know, talking about the economic impact and what this means to our community and what, you know, having, having, you know, clearly we've been designated as critical access for a reason. Critical access means we have to have a hospital here to service our community. So the problem here is, is that there are no, there are no two closer county seats in West Virginia than Weston and Buchanan. You know, we will never be in this predicament with our friends in Elkins. They're, 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 they're over the, we could build a hospital at Keesling Mill and still not touch them. So, but we have some, we have some options here if, if, if things don't, if things should turn south. We've been in contact with Senator Manchin's office and Senator Capito's office to request a, a specific, a specific line item language to grandfather us into that we, no matter what happens, we keep our critical access designation. They are supportive of that, but we are, you know, we're exercising every opportunity. We are not rolling over. We are fighting to make sure that this, and that this has occupied a tremendous amount of Skip's time, my time, our board's time. And, you know, we, we are, we're working very hard and, and we are not going to let this community not have a hospital. That is, that is under no circumstances a possibility. So, sorry that took so long, but that's, that's, that's the story.
I'm sorry, just because I did that, was there a new ruling issued since we did that article?
Not really, it's just, it's in, it's just like, it doesn't match with appeals back, you know, back and forth.
Okay, we'll look it up, I just wanted to make sure.
But because we are, because, where we're at right, this will now drag on further. We'll be, we'll be sitting here talking about this next year.
Okay.
Because of all of the back and forths with appeals and, and, and we disagree with you and we disagree with you and so. At the end of the day, in West Virginia's hospital, we all know that West Virginia's hospital systems have just been, the tables have all turned upside down. You know, ten years ago, we had a bunch of independent hospitals around the state and now we have three healthcare systems. You have Marshall Health, which is now Mountain Health, which is in the Huntington Tri-State area. Point Pleasant, I believe, just became under their wing. You have now Vandalia, which is the Mon General, C.A.M.C., Conglomerate, they're in the, they're in the Canal Valley and Lewisburg and then in Morgantown and then they've got Grafton and then they've got Weston. And then you've got WVU that's just got literally everything else. WVU has, now has Princeton Memorial Hospital, they have Reynolds in Woundsville, they've got Wheeling Hospital, they've got Camden Clark, they've got Jackson and Ripley, they've got, so, so this is, they, they, everybody is vying for what, care, hospitals are, the, the mega, the, the motherships know that their bread and butter is in primary care. Where you can get a referral in primary care is going to dictate the road ahead for Ruby Memorial Hospital, Mon General Hospital, Charleston Area Medical Center, the, the, the Jones C. Edwards Medical Center in Huntington. So it's all about primary care. So, but we, it, it, it's very complex, it's, it's, it's very, it's very frustrating, you know, go, go figure. Health, health, healthcare in America is frustrating, but we are doing everything we can, so, and we feel good right now. Right now, as of eight forty-five P.M., we feel okay. Tomorrow brings a new day.
Did you have anything else you wanted to hear about the public?
That's all I've got.
Hold, hold the string. All right, Jack, what you got?
Well, Randy Wamsby was a huge success and obviously with Jerry and Ambi and J.B., Chief Gregory and all the others, you know, that have rallied to support the project is a huge success and was recognized worldwide. The, the way we were able to take care of the band members from Poland, for instance, made international news. I think that's phenomenal. And Dave, you mentioned Upsher County Schools levy, I'm going to pontificate a little bit. Upsher County Schools is in a deplorable situation with the state takeover. I understand that this is probably the worst situation the State Board of Education, the West Virginia Department of Education has ever seen. Legally, just one percent of the data, just one percent of the information available to the auditors demonstrated that Upsher County Schools is a system in crisis. We have to worry about our students and, and we have to worry about the future of Upsher County. I was asked, what would it take to regain the trust of the citizens of Upsher County? I said, there's three things. One, the public has to be notified of all the illegalities and non-compliances that exist. You're not going to know that until a criminal investigation is complete. Two, the people of Upsher County need to know and understand what steps will be taken to address the issues that allowed these illegal, non-compliant activities to occur. And thirdly, the people of Upsher County, if indeed there's criminal activity and laws have been broken, they want to see people prosecuted for their crimes. Maybe then Upsher County Schools will regain the trust of this community. But I, I hate to say it, a passing of levy, good luck. People are angry, they're scared, they're worried for the quality of education their children are going to get. And the situation is far more serious than people fully understand, that's my concern. It is a dire situation in Upsher County, educationally. So, good luck with the levy. My heart goes out to the people in Phillippe. Hardest and broadest college has been closed. The mayor just mentioned that St. Joe's is our largest employer. A.B. was the largest employer in Barber County, I believe, I don't believe it's the hospital.
That's correct.
And all these people will potentially be displaced unless some entity purchases that campus and puts in something else, something new. We need to put those good people in our prayers, their neighbors. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Jack. Mr. Thomas?
I just will echo what everybody said about Wamsby, it was pretty phenomenal. And I appreciate all the city employees that stepped up the extra mile, worked many, many hours. Appreciate all the volunteers, what they did. And it was a great, great undertaking. Randy, thank you for all the hours you put in and getting that band here, those bands here, it was, it was great. I heard nothing but very, very positive comments. Responding to what Jack had to say about the school board, I agree with many things you're saying, Jack, but at the same time, I see it as an opportunity that we can make some progress in the future. I don't know about the excess levy, that may not be the right way to go right now, but we need some changes, very significantly. And the school is critical for any kind of people that have children. For companies are looking at relocating here, or people wanting to retire here, people have their kids maybe come also with their children. So it's going to take time, it's not going to be done overnight. That's what I worry about. I don't want them to school Department of Education with the state, drag their feet on this. I worry about governmental employees sometimes, not our city employees, but I worry about the federal employees and state employees. Do they, they don't have the same emphasis that we need to take to do things in a timely manner. And that's what I'm concerned about. So, thanks everybody for what you did for Wamsby, keep up the good work.
Thanks David, C.J.?
It was an exciting week. I think it was a, a great thing for the city and a lot of people are talking about Buchanan in a different light, the ones that have never been here. But some of the other things that we've talked about here tonight, the educational crisis, financial crisis, I mean, even criminal justice, the, the blindfold on Lady Liberty blew off decades ago. So when we're calling for justice, let's call for equal justice under the law and not what's been going on in, in this country for a long time. The United States was just downgraded financially by Standard and Poor's or whoever the rating agency is. And so we have no, no shortage of things to be concerned about. We are kind of isolated here in the center of West Virginia and things look good. And there's a normalcy bias about what's going on in the world because just because we have an experience, it doesn't mean it hasn't happened before in history thousands of times. And I think we have that going on right now and as we plow forward through all these issues in our political system, educational system, financial systems, we're on shaky ground and it's going to take some solid leadership in the future to extricate ourselves from this situation we find ourselves in. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to skip Randy because he'll have nothing to say, but, no, just kidding. I, I, he'll, he'll, he'll go last this evening. I, I certainly, you know, I, I was, I was at all of our Wamsby events and they were, they were fantastic. I was very proud of our citizens. I was very, I was very proud of our business owners. You know, I was also very proud of our region. The whole, the whole fiasco with Poland not receiving their instruments and their, and their, and their luggage because it got lost in transit and then it finally arrived here, you know, very late in the game, almost time for them to turn around and go home. But for Grafton and Philip Barber and Elkins and Lewis County and Buchanan Upsher to come together and, and donate instruments, I mean, that, that just, it, it just depicts what we know here. You know, West Virginians are well, are, are always, always good to lend a helping hand to our neighbors, whether they be, you know, right down the street, county next door, or halfway around the world. So that was, that was neat. And I've had the opportunity to be on, you know, Metro News and different things a couple of times and I, I, it's the best thing that we've ever done. And Randy, we certainly applaud you for bringing it here. It, it, it just, it exceeded, I think, expectations and it, it really, it, it, it's cliche as all get out, but, but we are all unified by the language of music and that was certainly depicted a couple of weeks, or last week here in, in Buchanan. Real, real quick, real quick, I spent the week at Municipal League. It was, we had over the large, we had the largest attendance there ever. It was over six hundred registrants to the Municipal League. It's going very well, so I, I'm, I'm yet another year closer to becoming president of the Municipal League. So I was, I was installed as, as, as the next level officer in, in yesterday's board meeting. It's a wonderful organization, it's unlike anything else I've ever been a part of. You know, I've been a part of Chamber, been a part of different trade organizations like insurance and economic development. But, you know, what's interesting about those is in, especially insurance and economic development, you're in a lot of ways, you're in competition, you know. We are all friends, but like, but, but, but at the end of the day, you, you could sell a policy versus that person could sell a policy and, and we would like to, we'd like to attract this, this to our community. We don't really want it to go over there, but, but when you go to the Municipal League, everybody is there to help. Everybody is there to support everybody because we know that the work of municipalities is grueling. It is not easy and everything that we do is dirty and when I, I don't mean politics, I mean the work we do. I mean, we, we, the street work, the park work, the sewage work, the water work, the, the, the garbage collection work, the firefighting work, the police. collection work, the firefighting work, the police work, it's not, they're not attractive, you know, jobs all the time. I mean, they come with a lot of grit, and a lot of grain, and a lot of, and then our office staff deals with a lot of angst from the public, in every city in the state. So, it's a great organization, it's growing, and we have a strong force at the Capitol to make sure that we maintain viable cities moving forward, and not just Buchanan, but also Parkersburg, and Winfield, and Beckley, and Morgantown, we're all there for each other. And I will tell you this, when there was a, when a delegate from our county to the west was looking to place a line item in the middle of the night on a bill, an amendment to allow that hospital to bypass every last CON law that there was, the Municipal League came to our defense. So, it's a good organization. And today, we had the St. Joseph's Hospital Golf Tournament. We raised a heck of a lot of money for our hospital, and so that was a good time, and Dr. Reed was up there taking pictures. So, we've discussed some concerns tonight, but I want us to walk away this evening knowing that, I agree with Mr. Thomas, we have opportunity. So, we just have to recognize it and stay ahead of it, and make sure that we keep, that we lead our citizens in knowing and believing that we are not going to go away. So, with that, I'll get off my soapbox. Real quick, we have an executive session following Mr. Sanders' comments, so please stick around for that. I've got some news for you all relative to some property matters. So, with that, Mr. Sanders, you take it away and talk about this big, thick thing of Wamsby news.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and listening to the good things that we talked about tonight and the actions we took, also listening to the concerns that we have as a community. I have to think that, growing up in Buchanan, I was born and raised in Rock Cave, southern part of the county, then became a teenager, moved to Buchanan. Spent those years up until I, you know, took a career in pageantry, and I had to move away for a while. But I always was proud of this community, and I knew we had the ability to do whatever we set our minds to do. And I was a member of the Board of Directors for 13 years for the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, and one time a person said, "Why are you putting so much effort into this event? It's just Buchanan, West Virginia, for goodness sakes." And I was just appalled that that statement was made. We're not just Buchanan, West Virginia, we are Buchanan, West Virginia, USA. And when this opportunity came to us, Brad Kellison first brought it to our attention over three years ago to host the Wamsby event, the World Association of Marching Show Bands 2023 World Championships. It was a big task, it was a big undertaking. Mr. McCollough was merits of time, and he supported it wholeheartedly, as did the entire City Council. And we got to nod to go ahead and put together a proposal, 48-page proposal, went to the International Board of Directors, we went up against six other countries, and we prevailed, and we were named the host of the 2023 competition. And it was a daunting task. We looked for some other people to oversee it, maybe get production companies, production advances. We formed a 501(c)(3) to take the burden away from the city in a lot of aspects. The city was kind enough to start us off with generous funding, but we, you know, we acquired many volunteers, many great professionals to help us along the way, and I, by default, kind of ended up heading this planning committee. But it's not just me, it was the hundreds of city employees, it was this City Council, it was the members of this community, it was the many, many, many sponsors who came forward and provided financial funding. It was the work of a lot of people, not only me, but a lot of people. And, you know, we pulled it off. I mean, we showed that the United States could host this event for the second time in 27 years successfully. We showed that West Virginia was a great state to have in, and we really showed them that Buchanan was an excellent host city. West Virginia Western College was an extremely important partner. Their campus has never looked better than it did last week from Wamsby, and that didn't come easy. They put a lot of finances into this, they put a lot of man-hours. Their physical plant was hard at work, just like our city employees were hard at work. And we worked side by side to prepare. The county came through, you know, they gave the nod to the sheriff, originally, of course, Sheriff Milleran and Sheriff Kaufman, you know, to work side by side with our law enforcement agencies here in Buchanan. Counties around us, municipalities around us came together. We've had meetings with as many as 75 first responders in one meeting over the past several months, planning, members of the medical community coming together, working hand in hand. They might be competitors on paper, but they bonded and provided great medical care for our visitors as well as for our community. As Chief Kempel said, we didn't have a major incident from the Wamsby participants that were here. We had one who had a case of the chickenpox, and he was treated like a king. He was in an air-conditioned building on the campus of Wamsby, but somehow, they made sure he got an air conditioner because of his temperature. He was fed like a king throughout the process, and his bandmates all rallied, and he was able to participate towards the end. I'll have a more detailed report, as the hour is getting a little late tonight, I'll have a more detailed report in the next upcoming meetings that will have much more data and much more accolades. Two letters I'd like to read that I think really sum up the public's perception of what we did. This is addressed, dated July 27th, addressed to Mayor Robbie Skinner, recorded Randy Sanders at City Hall. Gentlemen, a hearty congratulations to you both and the hundreds of associates and volunteers on the success of the Wamsby Extravaganza. Pulling together all of the many logistics involved with nothing short of amazing. The pride, prestige, and benefits for the USA, West Virginia, and Buchanan is beyond measure. Pat and I were extremely moved by the spirited young people you brought here, especially those from Central America and Asia. These kids seemed happy if they performed, smiled, waved, and entertained us. The sad thought is, most are going back to their homes, countries where political unrest and unstable governments exist, with their future lives so uncertain. This event will most certainly be a long-remembered highlight in their lives. We thought Lee Greenwood's powerful freedom message resonated well, as he gnawed at these young people more than once. Kudos and best wishes for continued success. Jim and Pat Marsh. P.S. Don't know what your job descriptions state regarding vacations, but you both certainly deserve a break.
So moves.
And then I will also read this from this correspondent. Dear Randy, on behalf of the World Association of Marching Show Bands Board of Directors and Volunteers, we would like to thank you, Randy. Please pass along our thanks to Lee Winter and the hundreds of city employees, first responders, and allies who collaborated, took diligent efforts to make the 2023 Wamsby World Championships so successful. The support that was evident from the mayor, city council, and citizens made a tremendous impact on the participating groups. The office has received many positive comments of the events that were organized. When our organization was first conceived, it was designed with two major goals. One, a quality competition with a jury of experts with no biased preferences to form and style. Their evaluation of each performance is based on the quality of the ensemble. Two, through the language of music to build an understanding of people around the world. We believe these goals were extraordinarily accomplished by your event. Also, my personal feeling is that this was a perfect example of the old adage, when the going gets tough, the tough get going. Outstanding work and congratulations, Mr. Robert Eklund, President and CEO of Wamsby International. So, we have compiled through Ryan Strategies, who was our media consultant from the beginning. And once we got into seeing just how enormous this task was, you know, we started off by paying Ryan Strategies to get us set up and get things moving, and then Curtis Wolferson was kind enough to donate, for the past many, many months, their services as a sponsorship to Wamsby. So, they've compiled how many media hits this event created over the past two and a half years. Ryan Strategies spent 2022 and 2023 80 Wamsby and building brand awareness, media relations and communications across the state of West Virginia and beyond. These efforts led to more than 280 media hits, ranging from local, state, national, and international media that discussed the Wamsby event. And I think that, you know, if you can see, it's 48 pages. And each one of these pages, and I'll email this to every council member and to anyone in the public that was requested, each link goes to the story or the video talking about Buchanan, West Virginia, US of A, just everything. It's El Salvador, it's Taiwan, it's China, it's Germany, and it goes on and on and on. In my business, the value of this much media exposure would be six figures. This would be over hundreds of thousands of dollars of paid media to get this kind of exposure around the world. So, this was a great event for us. Again, I'll have a more detailed, once I get a chance, to talk to some of the bigger retailers. And I know that there were many, many trips from the campus by foot by the participants all the way to Wal-Mart and back, and to Walgreens, and to CBS, and, you know, I talked to several restaurants who served different groups, who had different groups in there. So, it was a successful event. It did make a big impact on the community. To pray again, can't thank Sam for being enough for what she did. It's not all bells and whistles, though, it's not all roses. We encountered one major hiccup, and that had to do with the transportation part, which we had worked extensively with the Upsher County Board of Education. And we asked them to do nothing more than they have done for decades with groups like Special Olympics, West Virginia Strawberry Festival, 4-H groups, FFA, groups that have no exact ties with the school system. We asked to use their buses, and we offered to pay for those buses. We worked out a situation where a bus would cost us about $1,500 a round trip to pick these bands up and return them to the airports. Unfortunately, with what happened about three weeks before Wamsby, that got nixed by the State Board of Education. I appealed, I asked consideration, I told them the hardship it would bring upon us, and they would not change course. So, the State Board of Education said, "You cannot use the buses, you cannot use our facilities, you know, we will not participate in Wamsby." That was disappointing, and that discussion will continue. I will continue to have a discussion with the Board of Education. What that triggered was, we quickly had to shift gears and start hiring professional tour buses. We had no leverage to negotiate, we were on a tight timetable, and those trips to the airports went from $1,500 apiece to as much as $10,000 apiece. So, we will be working on some additional fundraising to pay those bills off. We want to make sure that everyone is satisfied, we have a plan of action in place, but I was very disappointed because I asked, I recognized the problem you brought to us. Will you help us find a solution? And I was told, "That's not our job, to help you find a solution." So, we will continue those discussions with the State Board of Education, and we'll pursue every opportunity we have to get assistance and to get help. But let's leave it on a great note, Buchanan came through big time, and it was decided by the mayor and I that the only people should have, that should have the privilege of presenting that traveling flag to Germany were representative of the city employees. So, our thanks, our sincere thanks to everyone who helped with Wamsby, and I look forward to providing a more detailed, trended report of our success in the near future. Thank you.
The biggest takeaway I said that hits me from all this with the school board, you know, all these decades of years, I thought these were our schools and our buses, and here they are, they're the states, because they just took them back.
Yeah.
And...
Well, the state board hasn't heard the last of this.
What's that?
The state board has not heard the last of this.
No, it's...
Well, it's really not their buses.
Okay.
It's a little ridiculous.
They don't own the damn buses.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thanks for your support.
You're welcome.
Executive session, I agree with Jack, I want to mention this too. Please keep Phillippe in your prayers, AB is closing, that's a major hit. So, please keep Phillippe and the residents over there in your thoughts and prayers, and if they need anything from us, we'll be happy to oblige. Is there, if there's no other public business, I would entertain a motion that at 9:11, we adjourn to an executive session relative to property matters. adjourn to an executive session relative to property matters.